And we're live. We're live on the Rising Texan Podcast, everybody, and we're waiting for a little bit more people to come on our live. As you know, we like to run our show live, have viewers. Uh, we got a good interview today, guys. We will be interviewing. Uh, I know if you follow social media, especially our page, you have been seeing a lot of candidates, Republican, uh, claiming Republican candidates, candidates coming out saying that they want to run for Maverick County, Maverick County position under the Republican ticket. Now, this is something that, that, you know, Maverick County doesn't see readily, doesn't, it doesn't come out in Maverick County very much. We usually have predominantly Democratic, right? Uh, Democratic people running under the Democratic, uh, under the, the Democrat ticket. So, uh, recently, we've been having a lot of Republicans coming out, most recently one for Commissioner, which is, I think, the, we had one for County Judge, we had one for Precinct Two now Commissioner, Maverick County Commissioner. And, uh, he recently had, uh, an issue that, that went on with him and we're curious as to what exactly happened, what's going on, um, you know, is it something that, 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 uh, you know, maybe erroneous, maybe, uh, reaching by the powers that be or what have you? So, we thought it was important to come out and, and he's a supporter of our show, of course, he's, he's a sponsor of, of our podcast. So, we're gonna go ahead and bring out, uh, Jose Rodriguez, he is the CEO of Rodriguez Business and Consulting Services. He is also a Republican candidate for Maverick County Commissioner, Precinct Two. So, let's go ahead and bring him out. Hey, how you doing?
Good afternoon, Isaac, how are you doing?
Uh, I'm, I'm pretty good. Uh, what we want to ask is how you're doing? I mean, recently, we, we saw all over the news, all over, um, you know, you, you got into some kind of situation, right?
Yeah, I got in a little situation, but I mean, I guess, good publicity or bad publicity, well, I mean, they're talking about you, so that could be good.
We, a lot of us thought, if anybody that has a Facebook and you follow any local news channel here, uh, I know you came out, uh, you know, in, in those PJs is what I like to call them, right? Uh, with, and, and everything, and we know, uh, what happened. I mean, we know what the news sources have told us, right? That, that's what we know. Um, I, I don't know if you can maybe elaborate or something, tell us a little something, because it, it, it looked a little weird, and, and I'm saying this from the outside looking in, that it was almost immediately right after that we, you know, announced, you announced on your Facebook page, we saw that, we went ahead and, and shared it on our page, that you would be coming out as a Republican candidate for Maverick County Commissioner, Precinct Two. And I think it was shortly hours after that, that we caught wind of, you know, you being arrested, being dragged into Maverick County, uh, can you tell us who, who, what, what authorities were involved in this?
Well, what I can tell you right now is that I did announce, um, on Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, on the first of December, I did announce my intentions to register to, um, my candidacy, candidacy for, um, the Republican Party for Commissioner. And I did announce it around four thirty, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have the exact time. And, um, I did have a call from the authority, which I did not, with my business and everything else going on, I didn't realize that I had that call. Um, but that happened, um, the arrest happened a few hours later. Um, the-
Literally the same day?
Huh?
Literally the same, the hours, I said literally the same day, hours apart, right?
Yes, it was the same day, there was hours apart. So, I really cannot say it was really coincidence, but I mean, for my bad luck, that's what happened. And, um, it's an ongoing investigation and, um, all I can say is that my attorneys are handling this situation and everything will be cleared up in a court of law. Um, and I can say that I will continue to pursue my, um, my run for Commissioner. And I will not back down.
This little thing, uh, you know, whatever it is, uh, of course, what they're accusing you allegedly of doing is defrauding the program. Now, I know you've been outspoken about this, uh, American Rescue Plan program, you've been very outspoken about it. Uh, we actually ran a story on, on, on you, uh, whenever you went and submitted some kind of complaint uh, about what was happening in this program. And it just kinda seems, uh, following the history on this, that, you know, you put that kinda, you put a complaint in about what's going on in there, and, and we covered it on our page. And then now, all of a sudden, they're, you know, alleging that you're defrauding. And I know you can't really go too into detail about it, because it is an ongoing investigation and everything. But, uh, I mean, you're not gonna stop you or, or anything, you know?
I was very, um, active on that situation, um, especially, um, because I wanted the people and small businesses to take advantage of this program that was their entitlement to apply. Um, not because I wanted to gain any benefit for myself. Um, the applicants that came to my consulting firm, um, and I assisted them to fill out their applications. Um, were nonprofit, I did not benefit of anything. I filled their applications for free. Um, there was no income for whatever reason from me filling out their applications. I wanted to help out the community, because the program was not being run correctly. And this is what I complained about to the administrators of the program, that the offices were not assisting the people applying with the applications. And they were changing the policies every week. And that's one of my complaints that I wrote, and we covered it, like you mentioned, in your, in your website. And then you covered the story. And I did follow up with the Attorney General, um, from the state of Texas. And we went all the way to the Attorney General of the United States. Um, and, um, they followed up and I did submit an, uh, a letter to, uh, House Representative, just recent, because I did not hear from the DOJ. And they are opening a congressional hearing to determine why was this not investigated appropriately? Because some people did not receive their funds.
Oh, wow. So, I, I mean, it, it just seems very funny that how you're trying to advocate for the community, help community, and then, you know, you land yourself in the situation that you're in. It's just, uh, it seems kinda fishy. And then you add in the fact that, uh, I, I know in our, on our end, uh, we've been trying to get this information as to who's received the funds. Um, what businesses, what individuals, and apparently, you know, they kept on responding to us that there was an ongoing investigation. And I, I mean, it, it's kinda weird how everything kinda intertwines a little bit here. And it's, uh, it's a eye-opening situation that it went all the way to, to, uh, Washington, correct?
Yeah, I spoke to my, um, my contacts in Washington this evening and they, um, they told me that they were gonna open a congressional hearing, um, with Congressman and with the Congressman, um, that I am working with. I will not name names at this moment, because they're still, um, at the early stages of this. So, I will let you know, once they have a determination of this, I can publicly announce it and give you the exclusive of this.
Awesome, awesome.
And, and it's just- Also, uh, as you mentioned, that they don't have any public records. If you look into the Maverick County, they have not posted any financial records of what they are budgeting or spending throughout the months. The last month they reported was August.
Back in August, so you're talking about September, October, November now, we're in December, so that's three months without reporting to what, to the, to, to the feds, what they're doing with their money?
Well, at least everything, what they, you know, they, they, they give them, uh, every report. And I downloaded the last report from August and it's there, you could see it, and you can see what they have, uh, what is expenditure and what has been gained and everything that the county recovers and spends. And the American Rescue Plan is on there too. You can, I'll let you see it yourself, I don't wanna give you incorrect information, because I don't have it with me at the moment. But if you try and see for September, October and November, there's no files there, so where are they hiding this information?
I, I mean, it seems, it seems suspicious to say anything. We're not, we're not trying to say there's something wrongdoing, it just, it, it doesn't smell right, you know what I mean? Like, it, it just doesn't, it doesn't add up. How do three months of reporting just, you know, don't go reported? Uh, we've been trying to get it through public information requests and that, that hasn't worked. And then all of a sudden, they kinda wanna say that you're defrauding and allegedly doing, you know, uh, something bad. And it, all of a sudden, it's like, what's actually going on, going on here, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Um, well, I, I mean, I guess that's, that's what we have there. And we're interested in, in what made you want to run for Commissioner of Precinct Two as a Republican candidate?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to turn this around. I, I just don't wanna focus too much on the side of the, of what is going on of Maverick County. That's something that I'll let take its course. Um, why is it that I wanna run for Commissioner? I mean, I'm, I'm a simple guy. I've been a simple guy, I've lived here in Eagle Pass for the past, well, I can say all my life, because I moved here when I was five years old. So, I grew up here, um, and I went to school here and everything. So, I'm from here and I know around the community, I know a lot of people from the community here. And I know and I can relate to the people that have the necessity of what is failing with the current Commissioner. There's a lot of people complaining about missing, I, well, unfortunately, they're barely paving the streets, but after how many years? It took them that many years for them to actually do something about it? You have to hear you, the, you have to hear the people that are struggling and have needs, like me and you. Why is that? Because that's the, the people that elected you, not because you have a high position now in, in the government, that means that you don't listen.
And, uh, I, I mean, you're absolutely right, when it comes to the street paving thing, I, I believe that the current Commissioner has been there about eight years, uh, going on eight years already. And it's the first time they address, uh, Member Robinson, which I know they've been trying to, uh, do little patches here and there, but of course-
Why is that? Why is that? Because they, they gave her extra funding from all the other precincts? I mean, that's the only reason they're paving extra-
At, at the cost of the rest of the community.
Exactly. I mean, they, the other precincts have other stuff to do, but they're taking it away from them to do this person's job, because she hadn't met that goal previous years.
So, do you think, in your opinion, that, that the reason why this funding is being allocated, you know, in literally the final year with, does it have anything to do with elections coming up?
Most likely. I mean, if, if, if it, if it is, um, it will look good in, in her part for her to accomplish a lot in these couple of months. But people should not be satisfied by that, because it's something that she could have done before and sooner. I mean, how many, how many tires or how many brake pads and how many parts of cars have you broken before by the time that she paved?
Yeah, there are a lot of complaints like that, uh, I mean, I've gotten several complaints of people that live in that area.
With that pothole, I mean, it's, it's just relevance and it's common sense for everybody. I mean, the struggling people and the people that live paycheck to paycheck and the ones that live day to day and the ones that don't know if they're gonna have work the next day is the people I can relate to. Why? Because at one point before I had my business, is how I lived my life. Why? Because it's, 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 it's life, I mean, sometimes it's hard for people and sometimes it's easier for others. But I know the struggle that it is and I can relate to most Americans and most people here in, in Eagle Pass, and especially in, in my community.
So, you mentioned the, the roads is one thing, and I think that that's a big, a big situation, uh, especially out in Precinct Two, where there is a lot of roads that haven't been paved, haven't been paved yet. Um, I know I, I, we had mentioned about them having a celebration and, and spending seventy-four thousand towards, uh, you know, certain bands and stuff like that that are gonna come down, which is good, I mean, it's good to celebrate. But seventy-four thousand could have gone a long way for some street paving, you know, in, in these streets. Not just this year that there's an election coming up, but in the past eight years when this Commissioner's been in charge. Uh, what other situations do you feel besides the streets would be good to, uh, pay or be good to implement that you see that the county, current County Commissioner hasn't, you know, uh, done anything about?
We, we have a lot of things that we, I would personally address. I know that they have here the NACAR, I, I specifically don't know what they are doing there in that, um, building, specifically, I, I really don't, I, I haven't never asked. But that, that center can be, be utilized for something. Um, I know that they don't have a shelter near us, at least here in, in our community, for Precinct Two. Um, that can be held for that sort of a, of, of, uh, of a building for, for the precinct and, um, doing other activities for the precinct and spending more in the infrastructure, uh, shelters and, um, getting more involved into what is, what the community needs. I mean, there's been so much, um, need for different programs that we need to bring into Eagle Pass and to the community and to the county, specifically with mental health, alcoholism, um, women suffrage, abusing children, all of this. This is something that even, not even, not only in this precinct, but all precincts and in the county. I don't see that they are paying attention to this.
And that's something that's been, you know, uh, brought into question, especially recently. I mean, of course, that, that's, that it's existed, but I think with the recent COVID and, and all the things behind all that has, it, it's kinda boosted up the numbers and also brought it into the forefront that, hey, all of us are being affected into what's going on here. And there's not any, there isn't adequate, I mean, there is some stuff here, some people are doing some great work, but they're, they're literally overworked. They are trying to branch out as much as they can, but I think we hit a point where it's already, we're overflowing with the need, you know, it's overflowing with the need. And it could have been prevented had, you know, there'd been some responsibility from our leaders to implement these types of programs. Is that something we can look forward from you?
Exactly. That's something that I, I am really devoted to. Because, um, it's something that I personally can say that I've experienced before. And I know how the situation is and I've seen and spoken to many people, um, children, women, and they suffer and they need assistance. And that's where you can help them, not spending money in bands. Maybe you can create like a program to house them or something and not just give housing to random people that wanna live off welfare.
Yeah.
I mean, some people do need the welfare, but I'm just saying, there's people that abuse of the, of the system.
Now, another topic, I know I've seen in, in, uh, Facebook lately, uh, certain other Maverick County news leader, uh, of course, we have, uh, Rolfo Banda as well, they've been out in the streets walking from park to park. And we've seen a lot of parks that, that were built by previous Commissioners and, and now, I mean, fast forward eight years with the current Commissioner, I, I mean, they're literally deteriorating, uh, deteriorated. You know, these parks are not usable right now, people cannot go and enjoy them anymore. Um, will, will you have something implemented or some kind of policy where these parks are being worked on in a consistent basis? Because they do spend a lot of money, I mean, they have, uh, Luisi Fuentes's brother, of course, just recently hired during COVID. Um, they hired him at a very high salary, where they could have gotten maybe two workers instead, right? And implemented to where, hey, you know, every week you guys go to a different park and, and, uh, you know, maybe you fix it or, or, you know, these funds that we're spending on the band, fix that slide that's broken in, in one of those parks that are in Precinct Two. How, how do you feel about the situation with the parks and recreation right now in Precinct Two?
Um, I think that, um, especially with the accounting, obviously, that's something that I, I am good at. You have to look at what you're spending and, um, divide it into what is actually um, going to save you as much as you can. And if you can hire more people with that salary and give it a workaround and have more people come and fix it more often, that's the way to do it. Because it will be maintained and your parks won't fall apart as easy and won't depreciate as easily. And you won't have to reinvest in having to buy new equipment as fast as it's being installed.
Yeah, I, I mean, we've seen, I think it was two parks, I don't remember the exact names of them, but we did see in those videos, or at least I saw and I noticed that those parks were in very poor, you know, condition as to, you know, compared to when they were new. Now, uh, how do you feel about several, I think a couple of Commissioners have actually come out and said that we have too many chiefs, not enough Indians, you know, like too many bosses with high salaries, not enough, uh, employees to carry out orders. How do you feel about that? Do we need, uh, more employees, uh, hired at the county to be able to address those certain types of, uh, uh, public works?
I believe so. The employees are the essential, um, need of a, of, of, uh, of a building quadrant. And you need real leaders to be able to have them, um, working. And if you have leaders, they'll be working with them and not be the manner, managerial type that be telling them what to do. This is something that I learned at a leadership skills that I went to. I mean, a leadership, uh, leader follows his workers and innovates with them and not stays behind and tells them what to do. So, yeah, I think the worker is something very essential to do the job.
Yeah, and, uh, I mean, I'm just reminded right now, in, in your precinct, uh, which is Precinct Two, it's a very special precinct, because you guys actually have another entity within Precinct Two. That it's not, you know, for the whole county, right? Which is, uh, the Kikapu Traditional Tribe of Texas. Now, would you reach out to them and try to work with them as far as, you know, addressing their needs and, and working on building a stronger partnership? Because I do know a while back, um, the, the, the tribe, uh, their workers actually had to come out and address, uh, the road of Rosita Valley. And I mean, I understand that they, they address, uh, problems in their area, but is, is that something that you're willing to do? Is work hand in hand with the other entity that's, you know, really, really our neighbors and, and inside the precinct too? Is that something that you look forward to? Is that something you, you, you know, are open to doing?
Um, I'm not, um, it's a possibility, I, I mean, I would not close the doors to that possibility. Of course, if we are, uh, if that entity is, is in our precinct, um, I would, um, reach out to them and, um, um, let them know that I'm there for their support as well and see what their needs are. And if we can help each other out, um, the, the communication can be established.
Awesome, awesome. Um, now, you've been, you've been, uh, quite vocal lately with, um, how things are going in, in the county. I mean, we've seen posts from you when certain things happen and, uh, I'm not necessarily trying to, uh, uh, get you to say something bad, but, uh, what exactly, how do you think, uh, the state of the Maverick County when it comes to Commissioners Court? How do you feel with some of the things that happen in there that, you know, it kinda, some people call it a dictatorship, some people call it a majority, some people, you know, don't really care for what is happening in, in Maverick County's Commissioners Court right now? How do you feel about all that?
Um, to be honest, how can I put it? I, I just don't, I just don't like how it's handled. It seems like a very hostile place to be at and a very hostile place to conduct uh, business at that time. Why? Because you can feel the negativity of certain people and I'm refraining of saying names.
Now, um, I respect that. A lot of people have called on the, the current Commissioner as a type of just, uh, hand-raising Commissioner as to, you know, whatever a certain lead official wants, I mean, they're there to raise their hand to go along with them. Now, can Commissioner, can the people, um, expect that of you? Is that something you're gonna do? Just, you know, play the political side and, and go along with, uh, the flow? Or are you here for the people and, and for what's right for the people?
I think, um, for me is that I like to question why certain things are going to be this way. Why? Because there's always two sides to each story. Why? Because there's always two sides to each story. And to each proposition, there's a good one and there's a bad one. And we have to deliberate on what is the best situation. If they appoint something, it could be new ideas suggested or it could be totally wrong. That's why there's other people there. Currently, there's one, two, three, four, five. And those five people can bring different point of views. Usually, it's the same three that go with the majority rule. And I believe they just go with it and they don't seem to change anything or innovate anything for the county. They're just bland with their decisions and they just go with the flow. And I don't, that's not me. You sometimes have to be a little bit spontaneous and change the routine.
Yeah. And uh let me ask you this, because it's a situation that that did happen. Um there actually the the county commissioner of precinct two um put harassment charges on a fellow local citizen journalist for just reporting about what's going on in their in their precinct. Now, um, we all know that that elected officials, uh people that are going, you know, trying to run for for an elected position. They're at a different standard than the everyday, you know, average Joe that's walking the streets. Now, is that something that you would try to do uh as far as, you know, let's say you have some, I mean, right now, you have somebody in the comments just, you know, um being negative and voicing their opinion, which, you know, everybody's got an opinion, right?
Of course.
Um, now, would you call out that person and go and try to put harassment charges and try to put him in jail for expressing their opinions or trying to address situations that are not being handled?
First of all, I'm professional and I have ethics. And if there's something that I'm not doing right, if I were to win this election, if I'm doing something wrong, I can handle negative feedback or criticism. But I can tell you one thing, if you have negative feedback or criticism, you can come and tell me directly. Sometimes I can be wrong and we can work around that and I can change my my situation. Sometimes it's something that we just, we are all human. Sometimes I did something wrong and we just have to change it. There's nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, of course. I mean, because that's it's a situation, that's why I touch on it. Uh, just to have a comparison of what exists right now, where we did have, you know, a poor citizen journalism journalist, right, Porrecito, that had to go through a situation where he was uh arrested, put in jail because he was out here, you know, videotaping streets, videotaping parks, trying to show people the different work that wasn't being done. So I I mean, we wanted to make sure, especially, you know, viewers, if that's the way you were gonna, you know, be a commissioner, the way the current commissioner is is trying to handle those types of situations. Okay, guys, we lost the feed. Um, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but uh we're gonna go ahead and I I I mean, I don't know what happened with the situation. But um, guys, that that's what's happening right now. Uh, we have this gentleman here. He's running for uh commission, county commissioner precinct two. Um, hours after we announced his on on our page, you know, literally hours, he he does get arrested under alleged um attempt to defraud the state or the program. Um, again, that is the same program that the the Rising Texan News has been trying and trying to get information from, and we have not been given the the information. We did submit another request. Uh, we're assuming that the investigation that had happened was because of I assume the investigation happened uh or was happening uh with this situation. So that's why maybe they didn't wanna give us information or, you know, made some kind of excuse to where they um um, excuse me. I don't think you have to be registered as a business for a journalist. Um, there's several citizen journalists across the country. And now, what a lot of people don't know about businesses is you can register as a be a corporation, you can register as a limited liability company. Or automatically, if you have a business and you don't register, your business has something, it automatically defaults to a sole proprietorship. So, I mean, he doesn't have to, you know, nobody has to register any business now. Of course, you do have to have certain um oh, so you don't pay taxes as a business. I I I think you're not understanding, uh, Ms. Sanchez. The the thing is, is that automatically you get registered. Um, whatever business, you do not have to, I I mean, if you don't register as a corporation, you don't register as an LLC, your business is defaulted as an uh sole proprietorship. So when it defaults as a sole proprietorship, that means you are um liable as a business directly. It's not a separate entity, it's you, and you are responsible for the taxes as a person. In other words, you have to show those taxes in your personal tax tax uh, you you know, whenever you go pay taxes, you as a sole proprietorship, the income passes through you. So they have to show in your personal income taxes, any money you did receive as that business. So I think you're getting it a little bit confused there, but you don't need to register as a business because if you don't, it automatically defaults into sole proprietorship. And when that happens, all income goes to that person and it goes into their regular taxes. In other words, they don't have to pay, they don't have a separate entity that separates them from their personal taxes and their business taxes. Now, I am not a, uh, you know, I'm not an accountant, but that's basic uh business one oh one. So either way, I I mean, if he's a citizen journalist, he doesn't necessarily have to register as that. It's not, let's say, like a food establishment. A food establishment, yeah, I mean, you need to register and there are certain things that you need to do as a food establishment to be able to be a food establishment that sells according to, let's say, like the cottage laws. So, I mean, you're allowed to do that, uh uh uh, but there are certain rules you need to follow. Again, uh, as uh, you know, Ray Vasquez is here saying, the First Amendment, it protects freedom of speech, freedom of the press. And journalists do have rights to uh public places and disseminate news. Public places include sidewalks, public parks, but not private property. And and that's very accurate. I mean, as long as he doesn't go into private property, which as far as we know, he hasn't, you can go ahead and film, you go, you can go ahead and take pictures. You can report on anything that's happy happening in public and that you're able to view with your eyesight uh or camera sight or what have you, you know. So um, that's just a little bit of one oh one for for you, Linda, so you understand. There is a total difference. So I I mean, Mr. Banda does not have to register as anything technically. But uh, freedom of the press, yes. Oh, I said in business carnage. All right, guys, well, we have a we had a little technical difficulties uh with with Jose, the Republican candidate for Maverick County Precinct Commissioner, Commissioner Precinct two. But we have him back on, so let's go ahead and bring him on. Hey, how you doing?
Hey, sorry about that.
Did you run out of wifi or ran out of?
No. It died.
Oh, I see, I see. You're using another phone, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't home, so.
Uh, Linda, I I mean, you can call yourself whatever you want, Linda. I mean, you know, that that's that that's all right with me. I'm sure that's all right with Jose. You can, uh, yeah. What what whatever makes you happy. I think that's the important thing in life, right? Whatever makes you happy.
No, but to be a journalist, you have to have published articles first.
Oh, okay. Like on a website that maybe the Rising Texan has and and, you know, is organized, researched and all that stuff?
Well, at least for and for Facebook to be categorized as a journalist.
Okay. Make sure you, make sure your people like your shit. Oh, okay. Well, I I mean, enough with the with the comments, we're we're there. Um Oh, wow. Check this out. Breaking news, guys. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but check it out. Apparently, there's a apparently, uh, they're they're accusing this Linda Sanchez of being a fake profile and being actually Denise Cantu. And I I'm not sure what the obsession with Mr. Rolfo Banda is, but um, I mean, okay. Uh, the the comments say the craziest things, huh? Anyways, let's get back to the matter at hand. Uh, so Jose, you're you're coming out as a Republican candidate for precinct two. And we understand that that there may be another candidate out there that comes out as well. Uh, maybe, maybe not, I'm not sure. But uh, how do you feel with your situation as far as going forward with this? Uh, as it compares to the county commissioner, uh, current county commissioner of precinct two? Do you feel confident that you'll be able to give her a run for for her money?
Okay, good.
I I mean, what I'm wondering is that, uh, why would people try to come out and and bash you or like, you know, say anything in the comments if if they weren't worried about it? Or, I mean, I I don't even know. I I hate to uh, I hate
I mean, uh, one thing, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Um, if they didn't feel threatened by me, they wouldn't have arrested me in the first place. So so and so person, if they have or feel so threatened by me, that means that they might be threatened by me. So that's evident and clear.
No, I I I mean, I I I couldn't agree with you more. Um, I feel that 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 it was just kind of funny the way you just announced and then all of a sudden, you know, the situation that happened to you happens to you. Um, I I'm not sure if it's a coincidence or I'm not, you know, um uh, I'm sorry, I'm just laughing here at the comment.
It's really laughable. I mean, it's really laughable.
I I it's because, look, it it's it's ridiculous the way it's happened. Just let's kind of go back a little bit and talk. Where you have, uh, they're talking about Rolfo Banda, right? And how he ended up going to jail, he was, uh, his case was dropped, dismissed because there was no case, right? There was no case and 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 I believe a shout out to the Ramos Law Firm who was out there and got justice for for Mr. Banda because he wasn't doing anything wrong. And 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 let's be, you know, transparent as possible, the person who put in the ca- the complaint was was Rossi Cantu from the county commissioner precinct two. I mean, and that that's documented, you know, there's documents out there and it's the truth. Okay. So fast forward to you now, you come out and you say you're the first person to come out and say you're gonna run a run for precinct two. And then that situation happens to you too. It's just, I mean, that they made movies about this kind of stuff, you know what I mean? It's it's just, it's laughable and 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 how you mentioned and then um we have in the comments, because I'm sorry, I have a real bad habit of looking at the comments and trying to follow along with everything, right?
I I can't see the comments, so I I can't.
Oh, man. Well, I I mean, you have like um the supposed that they're saying that that's Denise Cantu and she's, hey, if you want to visit me, Rosio, I can give you my address, you know, to prove that I'm Linda Sanchez. And you have Rosio coming back. Go ahead, I'll visit you. We have a lot to talk about. And this is just um uh, it's 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 just hilarious to me. I'm sorry. I may have gone a little bit off topic, but I I I I just think that a lot of the people, especially the viewers, especially people that are commenting, that they're noticing what's going on, you know, and
And for most, I just wanted to clear up that, like I mentioned before, I wanna run my campaign as strength and not only my campaign and for people to know that I am a transparent person. And I I have dignity and honesty. And I am, that's the way I wanna run my campaign and that's the way I am. And this allegations um really, really surprised me. But I mean, if they are there, I mean, we will settle them in court. Like, I am not worried about it. Why? Because like they say in Spanish, and I have faith that everything will be settled and but I just wanna reassure to my customers and even new potential customers that they can feel with all confidence that if they are looking for any type of service from business consulting, accounting, tax preparation. I know that this next year is coming and taxes services will be doing this next year. Um, I have a new new service on that and I will give details when the time comes. Um, we have a variety of services that are in our webpage. I mean, you can feel comfortable coming in or calling us and we can set you up with um an appointment. I mean, we have never defrauded anybody. And we, that's never been our intention to do any damage to our community, our neighbors or our friends or our family members. Because we know how hard it is to work so difficult for the little money that might be coming to us from the government or whatever is that that you are attempting to do with our service to benefit you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And it's it's uh, we have David Malo now commenting, how can we not know what's going on? It's up there. It it's up there every time there's a meeting. And and I think that I think that that comment right there really resonates with the current situation that we have in Maverick County. And it's definitely, it it hits the 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 nail on the head, you know, because you, I mean, you can't even get an agenda from the website. You can't even, you know, these, we don't even know when these meetings happen until, you know, boom, they're on Facebook Live and what have you. And and one can go and voice their concerns and then you have the Maverick County judge won't even look at you at your face. Or as as what happened to me is whenever I went to go address my thing, you know,
Not in my court. Oh, I heard that one. I I heard that one from you.
Well, I I mean, that's what happened. I I mean, I I uh, I try to be as honest to my experience as possible. I report what what I see with my two eyes is as any type of journalist tries to, right? You 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 try to interpret what you see and you uh go ahead and and disperse the news as you see it. So uh, that's what we're trying to do and and we appreciate you uh coming out, doing something different because this town has always been a stronghold for for Democrats. And and I think that a lot of people don't realize that at heart, uh, us as a Hispanic race and the in the in the way we yeah, who's telling me that you told me off? Uh, you know, the little instigator that Joey is. But uh, when you get
His name's Jose.
Huh?
His name is Jose.
Ah, Jose. That's right. Los Tocayos.
Los Tocayos.
You see, you you have a lot, a lot of the Hispanic community that don't really realize that they were raised and we actually are naturally conservative, you know, a- and a lot of people that we're ra- we we get raised as conservative, but we've been pounded so much by the older generation, the democratic, 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 democratic. And they don't realize that we're conservative. Now, maybe conservative, moderate, there's something in between there. There there could be. But um we we appreciate you at least providing another option to what is always there. And you have a commissioner that's gonna run for a third term. You know, how, let me ask you this. How do you feel about term limits at the commissioner level? And the county judge level?
I think it's.
Because the city, the city, the city council actually has the eight-year uh term limit, you know? So if you're a council person, you can only do two terms. Uh one term is four years, so two terms would be eight. And then from there, you would have to jump, you know, to the to the mayor's spot if that's what you want to do. But do you think that there should be a cap for, you know, commissioners and county judges as well here in Maverick County?
I believe so.
So uh y- you would think maybe like two terms or something like that would be uh sufficient, right, to for them to uh do something good and then and from there, if they did so good, then they could be jumping into the county judge, running for county judge from there on, since they couldn't, you know, they would hit their term limit. Is that something you would like to maybe pursue in the future if you are elected as a county commissioner?
It could be a possibility. Everything is a possibility and and you always have to look for something new and new adventure and a way to further expand um your opportunities. I mean, if I were to be elected for county commissioner, I would be assisting the precinct of of where I live, precinct two. And if if by any chance I were to be running for county judge ever, I mean, that would be a vast majority of helping more people. It would be an honor to do that. I mean, I always have had a saying that if I can help one person in my life, it would make my life meaningful for the rest of my life. I can just imagine helping my whole community in just the multitude. I mean, at times I have had so much, I I can say blessings that I can help a lot of people. But with the government funding that they provide to these officials and they misuse it with other stuff that they don't really require, I would be using it towards my community. And make make them proud of to live in this community.
Yeah, because I I mean, I I I know a lot of people have come forward and they've said and they've expressed their disappointment with uh the government bodies as a whole. Not necessarily one or the other um. Um. But they have stressed that the people aren't happy. They want change. They want something different. And I think that's what won in the city election. And now you have candidates coming up uh giving them candidates coming up that are running for these county seats that are gonna be available. And you have them running on that platform as far as change. We want change. Is that why you're here to give uh the residents of Maverick County Precinct Two?
Yes, I'm here to change what so many years with this person have not been able to accomplish. And I'm here to hear the everyday average person like me needs to be accomplished. I am here to listen to each and everyone. I know it's gonna take hard work to do, but we will put it in the agenda and we will work together as a community to make it happen.
Awesome, awesome. Um I know we're reaching that one hour mark that I'd like to try to keep it within uh Jose, but do you have anything else uh to say to some of the viewers, some of the commenters? The people that are gonna be seeing this later on that might potentially be uh voters of you? Do you have any last words for them?
Um I just want them to know that this slandering of the media that has just recently happened is just false information that has happened to mislead the voters, the potential voters for that might consider voting for me. I just don't want them to be derailed from the purpose or the meaning of what I'm running for. Because I will work to gain your trust. And I am looking forward to learn about what you need to gain your vote.
Awesome. And uh one last question. So all said and done, what's gonna be that final result whenever, you know, termins get in and this and that and what's gonna be the end result with your case in in your opinion?
I still can't say. I will probably probably can't say yet, but I a hundred percent, a hundred percent can tell you there's nothing they can make me say that I will be guilty because I'm not.
Okay. All right. Well, we wish you luck as a Republican candidate for Maverick County Precinct Two. We appreciate you taking this time and coming uh forward to potential uh viewers, to potential voters of you um that 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 will vote for you, you know, in in November when the election takes place as a Republican candidate. So we appreciate your time and we want to wish you good luck and, you know, uh let's see what happens uh with this uh thing going forward.
Thank you for having me.
All right. We'll talk to you later. Thank you for joining us. Guys, so that was Jose Rodriguez. He is uh the CEO of Rodriguez Consulting and Services. Of course, we saw him on the news. Some some issue had happened with the public funding that was going on. He gave us a big bomb saying that, you know, up in Washington, there should be some moving around because of this program as it happened. Uh you know, things are are just a little weird here and there, a little sketchy. But uh he is still in the running for Maverick County Precinct Two as a Republican. He wants everybody to know, obviously, with what he said, that he is still gonna be around. He is still gonna be looking forward to securing this seat going up against uh, you know, no one has registered yet for precinct two, but um he says he's still gonna go forward with his election despite the situation that he had gone through. So we wish him nothing but the best of luck. Uh thank you, guys, for joining in. We appreciate it. Um it's always great to have this. It was a special report. We did want to get uh Mr. Rodriguez on here because of the situation that happened to him. Of course, this is not a regularly scheduled podcast. We had this on a Friday. We usually have our podcasts Wednesdays around eight, eight thirty, nine. So be on the lookout for our next podcast. But we thank you for the viewers to stop by and viewed and for those viewers that are gonna go ahead and be watching us at 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 a later date. So thank you very much. Um we appreciate it. Y'all have a good night. We'll see y'all later.